Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for the arrival of Her Excellency, the most Honourable Dame Sandra Prunella Mason, President of Barbados. Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for the arrival of Her Excellency, the most Honourable Dame Sandra Mason, President of Barbados; the Honourable Mia Amor Motley, Prime Minister of Barbados; Heads of State and Government of Caricom Member States and Associate Member States; His Excellency, Mr Serge Lechemy, President of the Executive Council of Martinique; the Honourable Mr Justice Leslie Haynes, Chief Justice of Barbados; Dr Carla Barnett, Secretary General of Caricom; His Excellency, Miss Ursula von der Leyen, President of the European Commission; the Right Honourable Patricia Scotland, Commonwealth Secretary General; Professor Benedict Oramah, President of the Afrimex Bank; Mr Sergio Diaz Granados, President of the Development Bank of Latin America and the Caribbean; the Deputy Prime Minister, Attorney General, Senior Ministers and other Members of the Cabinet of Barbados; Ministers of Foreign Affairs of Caricom Member States; Ministers of Government of Canada, France and Saudi Arabia; His Excellency, Mr Omar Hassan Shahedeh, Special Envoy of the United Arab Emirates; Holders of High Honours, President of the Senate and Speaker of the House of Assembly of Barbados; Members of the clergy, Members of the Caribbean Court of Justice; Ambassadors of Caricom Member States, Heads of Caricom Institutions; Ambassadors of Third Countries accredited to Caricom; Members of the Diplomatic Corps, Members of the Judiciary; Members of the Senate and of the House of Assembly; Senior Government Officials of Caricom Member States; Specially Invited Guests, Delegates, Members of the Media; Distinguished Ladies and Gentlemen, good evening! And welcome to the opening ceremony of the 48th Regular Meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caricom! Under the theme this year: “Strength in Unity: Forging Caribbean Resilience, Inclusive Growth and Sustainable Development”. First up, let us give thanks, and to lead us in prayer, please welcome Dr Adrian Smith of the Moravian Church Barbados Conference.
Let us pray. As we begin, we begin with a moment of silence, in acknowledgement of all those persons who would have died between the last meeting of the Caricom Heads and this one. Those persons whose life and work and witness has helped to shape our region; Those persons who would have sacrificed, and now even as we continue the work of Caribbean building and Caricom building, we give thanks for their life at this time. Eternal and gracious God, we thank you even now for our life, our health and our strength; We thank you for those who you have called into leadership, and those who are tasked with the responsibility of decision-making. We pray that as this meeting begins, that you would grant wisdom and discernment to all concerned. We acknowledge that there are a number of issues affecting and facing us, yet we thank you that you give us the collective wherewithal to be able to tackle these things together. And so we pray that you would grant to those within these sessions honesty and courage, boldness and compassion. We pause as we remember those who are impacted most by our discussions and deliberations. Remember at this time our great desire for strength in unity, and therefore we ask you to help us to overcome our pride or selfishness, to forgive our past hurts and pains. We bring before you our intent to forge greater resilience; Give us the wherewithal to stand and withstand against those forces within and without. And as we continue our deliberations and discussions to place our region on a path of sustainable development, we thank you for the contributions, and we look forward to the input of all, and that when all is said and done, the common good, the greater good, strength in our numbers, in our unity, will indeed show forth. So we ask your divine blessings this evening; we pray your wisdom, we pray your love, we pray all of your blessings on all persons under the sound of my voice. These are all the verses we ask, in Jesus’ name, and everyone says, “Amen.”
Amen. Thank you very much, Dr Smith. The Caricom Song is the official patriotic song of the Caribbean community. It celebrates the history, culture and identity of Caribbean people. Eternal and gracious God, we thank you even now for our life, our health, and our strength. We thank you for those who you have called into leadership and those who are tasked with the responsibility of decision-making. We pray that as this meeting begins, that you would grant wisdom and discernment to all concerned. We acknowledge that there are a number of issues affecting and facing us, yet we thank you that you give us the collective wherewithal to be able to tackle these things together. And so we pray that you would grant to those within these sessions honesty and courage, boldness and compassion. We pause as we remember those who are impacted most by our discussions and deliberations. Remember at this time our great desire for strength in unity. And therefore, we ask you to help us to overcome our pride or selfishness, to forgive our past hurts and pains. We bring before you our intent to forge greater resilience. Give us the wherewithal to stand and withstand against those forces within and without. And as we continue our deliberations and discussions to place our region on a path of sustainable development, we thank you for the contributions. And we look forward to the input of all and that when all is said and done, the common good, the greater good, strength in our numbers, in our unity, will indeed show forth. So we ask your divine blessings this evening. We pray your wisdom, we pray your love, we pray all of your blessings on all persons under the sound of my voice. These and all the verses we ask, in Jesus' name, and everyone says, "Amen."
Amen. Thank you very much, Dr. Smith. The CARICOM Song is the official patriotic song of the Caribbean community. It celebrates the history, culture, and identity of the people of the Caribbean. It inspires regional pride and unity and celebrates our diversity and highlights our shared vision and aspirations. To sing the CARICOM Song this evening, I invite to the stage, Beijan Songbird, Nikita.
From many distant lands, our forefathers came. Some seeking adventure, and some bound in chains. Through battles waged and fought, through victory and pain. By tests of their courage, our freedom was gained. In homage to those gone before us, the heroes of lands in the sun. We vow to join hands and to focus on building one Caribbean. Raise your voices high, sing of your Caribbean pride. Sing it loud and strong, feel your heart beat as one. And celebrate in song, as we rise to heights where we belong. Sound of victory drums, oh CARICOM. Though diverse and great we be, our ethnicities. The bonds that unite us are stronger than thee. We die, we pray, we love, we dance and we play. We relate to each other, the West and the East. So today as a people united, we turn and steadfast we stand. We look to a brand new horizon, the future now firmly in our hands. Raise your voices high, sing of your Caribbean pride. Sing it loud and strong, feel your heart beat as one. Celebrate in song, as we rise to heights where we belong. And sound of victory drums, oh CARICOM. Clap your hands and feet, here we go, ay! Ele, ele, pavo! Oh, will you say CARICOM? Le, 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 vao! Here we go! Cala, cala! Tá, bo, é, tá, bo, a, o! Oh, will you say CARICOM? Le, 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 vao! Hey! Say! Raise your voices high, sing of your Caribbean pride. Sing it loud and strong, feel your heart beat as one. Celebrate in song, as we rise to heights where we belong. Sound of victory drums, oh CARICOM. Ele, 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 pavo! Oh, will you say CARICOM? Le, 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 vao! Alá, alá! Tá, bo, é, tá, bo, a, o! Oh, will you say CARICOM? Le, 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 vao! God bless you all.
Thank you, Nikita. And now, to deliver this evening's official welcome, I invite Ms. Ashley Lashley, Barbados' CARICOM Youth Ambassador.
Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Barbados. Welcome to the land where the sun meets the sea, where the rhythms of calypso and tuk music pulse through our veins and where the air carries the spirit of resilience, freedom, and unity. Barbados is not just an island in the Caribbean, it is a beating heart of our shared destiny. It is my profound honour to officially welcome you to the opening ceremony of the forty-eighth regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. This year's theme, "Strength in Unity: Forging Caribbean Resilience, Inclusive Growth, and Sustainable Development", is not just a statement, it is a powerful call to action. For centuries, we have been resilient people. We are the descendants of those who refused to accept subjugation, the rightful heirs of revolutionary freedom fighters and visionaries. But today, can we say? Can we really say that we have claimed the full potential of our independence? Or are we still tethered to the structures that were never built to serve us? Are we truly living up to the promise of regional integration? Have we forged the unity our ancestors envisioned? Or are we still navigating the remnants of colonial bureaucracy and fractured ambitions? I believe true progress will not come from minor adjustments. It will come from shattering old paradigms, from rewriting the rules, not merely following them. Our people demands more. More affordable air and sea connectivity to bring our nations closer. Food and nutrition security, that is not just a goal, but a reality. Real investment opportunities, jobs, and economic liberation for our youth. But progress also means reparatory justice to heal historical wounds and climate justice to secure our future. We must be bold, demand what is owed, and build a Caribbean that thrives. A luta continua, the struggle continues. But must it always be a struggle? And what of Haiti? How is it that after centuries of leading the charge of black liberation, our Haitian brothers and sisters still suffer under the weight of political turmoil, economic instability, and external interference? We must not allow any external force, be it developed countries or otherwise, to dictate the sovereign right of Haiti and other Caribbean islands to determine their own destinies. O bonto, I am because we are. And I say to you, where there is no justice for one of us, there can be no peace for all of us. We must continue to confront the injustices of the global financial system. Because for too long, we have been shackled by a world order that was never designed with small island developing states in mind. The Bridgetown Initiative has laid out a bold vision for financial equity, but are we ready to really demand its full realisation? We are ready though, we are ready to solidify our ties with Africa, Latin America, and the Global South. Not just in sentiment, but in trade, in policy, and in collective strength. The George Bridge Declaration calls for action on crime and health security. But how can we be a zone of peace when illicit trade, arms, and economic manipulation continues to destabilize our region? Security must mean more than just reducing crime. It must mean, it must ensure, the health, prosperity, and the well-being of our people. So I ask again, what is the CARICOM ideal citizen? A citizen who is empowered? A citizen who moves freely across this region unrestricted by outdated policies? A citizen who thrives in a digital economy? Who harnesses our creative industries? Who competes not just regionally, but internationally? As Malcolm X once said, "You don't stick a knife in a man's back nine inches, pull it out six inches, and call it progress." The question is, are we making real progress? Or are we simply accepting a longer knife? This is a defining geopolitical moment. If multilateralism is under threat, then let us be the ones to forge a new path where respect, equality, and justice are not just ideals, but guarantees. So I leave you with this. What legacy will we leave behind? Will history say that we gathered, that we spoke, that we made resolutions? Or will it say that this was the moment when we finally took bold steps to claim our future? The choice is yours, the future is ours. Welcome to Barbados. Welcome to an island of possibilities, power, and purpose. May this conference be a catalyst for real change and may your time here be as inspiring as the vision we are striving to create together. O bonto, humanity towards others. Ojorona, omuja, freedom and unity. A luta continua, the struggle continues. Welcome.
Thank you very much for those powerful words. Ashley Lashley, Barbados' CARICOM Youth Ambassador. I now invite Dr. Carla Barnett, Secretary General of CARICOM, to deliver her remarks.
Her Excellency, the most honorable Dame Sandra Mason, President of Barbados; Honorable Mia Motley, Prime Minister of Barbados and Chair of the Conference of Heads of Government of CARICOM; Honorable Deacon Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada and outgoing Chair of the Conference of Heads of Government; Your Excellencies, Heads of State and Government of CARICOM; Your Excellency Antonio Gutierrez, Secretary General of the United Nations; Your Excellency Ursula von der Leyen, President of the European Commission; other heads of delegation, members of Parliament of Barbados; ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, all. I am very pleased to add my welcome to everyone here and online for the opening ceremony of our forty-eighth regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government being held here in beautiful Barbados. I thank the Honorable Mia Motley, Prime Minister of Barbados and CARICOM Chair, and all Barbadians for the gracious hospitality and affection which have been extended to Heads of Government, their delegations, and indeed, all guests. We look forward to benefiting from Prime Minister Motley's vast experience during her chairmanship. The region will recall her expert guidance of CARICOM affairs through the initial stages of the COVID-19 pandemic during her previous chairmanship in the first half of 2020. We have every confidence in her leadership, especially amidst the current global uncertainties. I am specially pleased to welcome our special guest to this forty-eighth meeting of the conference, His Excellency Antonio Gutierrez, Secretary General of the UN, with whom we've had several productive exchanges in different forums, including at previous CARICOM Heads of Government meetings. Her Excellency Ursula von der Leyen, President of the European Commission, joins us for her first exchange with the Conference of Heads of Government. We are very happy to share our signature Caribbean hospitality with you both. And we look forward to hearing from you later this evening. It is no accident that as we gather to craft decisions that will advance integration and improve the life of our peoples, our first official gathering is being held in the National Edifice named in the honour of Sir Lloyd Erskine Sandford, former Prime Minister of Barbados, former member of the Conference of CARICOM Heads of Government. Sir Lloyd is remembered as a staunch proponent of regional integration and cooperation and one of the architects of our integrated development strategy, the CARICOM Single Market and Economy. Under the guidance of Prime Minister Motley, who has responsibility for the CSME in CARICOM, CSME operations continue to be based in the Secretariat's office here in Bridgetown. And the community is also strengthened through the work of several of our associate and regional institutions which are also located here. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, the focus of this forty-eighth regular meeting of the Conference on Strength in Unity: "Forging Caribbean Resilience, Inclusive Growth, and Sustainable Development", highlights the need for renewed and expanded partnerships and collaboration as we grapple with existing and emerging uncertainties. The simultaneous global crises of climate change, biodiversity loss and pollution, crime and violence, ongoing military and trade wars, and other global shocks pose real and present threats to CARICOM countries. It is times like these that CARICOM's continuous call for international cooperation, multilateralism, and respect for international law takes on special significance. The current global challenges cannot be effectively addressed in splendid isolation. In our region, which accounts for less than 1% of the global population, we know that if we are to decisively counter and surmount the adverse effects of our development, we must redouble collective efforts, pool our combined wisdom, and act on the basis of our fundamental intrinsic principles. Collective action based on those principles guided our member states to be among the first to offer assistance and support to those impacted by the record-breaking Hurricane Beril in July 2024. Regional commitment, strength, and resilience were clearly visible by Grenada as they hosted the forty-seventh meeting of the conference within weeks after Hurricane Beril caused catastrophic damage, not only to Carriacou and Petit Martinique in Grenada, but also to the Guernada Islands and several other member states as it trekked across the Caribbean. In this regard, the community extends its gratitude to our immediate past chairman, Prime Minister of Grenada, Honorable Deacon Mitchell, whose determined leadership of CARICOM remained strong even as he dealt with the crisis of recovery and rebuilding in his own country. We continue our unified advocacy and unwavering support and assistance to our sister member state Haiti in the struggle to obtain peace and security. Millions of Haitians are unable to live free from rampant violence which stands in the way of economic development and of access to basic education and health, especially impacting on women and children. Our collective stand for territorial integrity and the rule of law is demonstrated in respect of our member states Guyana and Belize and the State of Palestine, which all of our fourteen independent member states now recognise. Internally, we are seeking to make our single market work more efficiently by simplifying the process of amendment of the community's rules of origin to allow us to more effectively respond in a changing trade environment. This meeting is expected to give approval to the changes necessary. This meeting will also take account of notable advances in regional food production under the 25x2025 strategy, even with the destruction of Hurricane Beril of agricultural production in several member states, especially Jamaica. As we move towards 2030, we expect the work begun under 25x2025 initiative to continue as the food and nutrition security...